Meeting of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District's School Committee. I officially call this meeting to order, and if you would please rise and join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice and tolerance. Uh, introduction of members will start over my [laughing]. Sarah Williams, Blackstone.
Carrie Goddett, Blackstone.
Tim Howell, Blackstone.
I'm Jane Reggio from Millville.
Erin Vinaco, Millville.
Tara Larkin, Millville.
Amanda Gilmain, Millville.
Matt Errenworth, Assistant Superintendent.
Jason DeFalco, Superintendent.
Welcome, everyone. It's really nice to sit this way again and not stare at somebody's back, so welcome back. This is great. Um, we're gonna jump right in, and we had warrants sent to us that are working their way around, but I will, uh, and we have minutes from, uh, May 13th and May 19th, so I hope everybody should have seen those. They're sent to us from O'Neil, so I'll entertain a motion to approve consent to Agenda A.
So moved.
Moved by Carrie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. I got Amanda first. I'm looking that way. It's hard to see you, Tim. Um, any discussion? Um, motion to approve consent to Agenda A. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Any abstentions? Okay. Public forum, we have Karen and Jill, who probably have to talk later, so, um, but we are back to, to full in-person meetings now, so if people would like to speak to the school committee, you are always welcome, uh, and just come to our meetings. Our next one is in, uh, on June 10th. All right, school committee, um, you received a copy of the proposed changes, word, uh, changes, item changes for Unit C. Hopefully had an opportunity to, um, go through that. I do believe it was ratified by
Yeah, it was.
Uh, the, the union, and so, um, I will entertain a motion to approve it on our end.
So moved.
Moved by Tam. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tara. Any, does anybody have any questions? Any discussion in general? They were very nice to work with. It was, it was long, because we started pre-pandemic
Yes, we did.
Post-pandemic, if you will, um, but they're, you know, very cooperative, so, um, hearing none, I will close the discussion, and all those in favor of approving the Unit C contract signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Any abstentions? Okay.
Can I just pass it around the signature page, Jen?
Sure.
Yeah.
Certainly.
I'll start down here with Amanda.
And, uh, we have, uh, facility requests, uh, for the Blackstone Millville youth, uh, is it basketball league?
Yes.
Yeah, basketball league.
Yep.
Uh, to use HartNet, which I think they do every time, or last summer, probably not last summer.
Just glad to see it for next, for this summer.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, so they use it in the month of August, well, actually, for just a week, a week in August.
It's for their camp.
Yeah, and it's usually pretty well-attended.
This, so, um, I'll entertain a motion to approve that request.
So moved.
Moved by Erin.
Second.
Second by Tara. Any discussion on that, or any discussion about how that works? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Any abstentions? All right, um, Jason DeFalco, I'll turn it over to you.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Good evening.
I'm gonna let Mr. Errenworth go first, but I forgot to tell
Oh, please, go ahead.
I forgot to tell you to move it on the
[laughing] Sorry.
So we'll, we'll
We're gonna let you go first.
I'll get you eventually.
Okay. Great. Um, thank you. Um, good, good to see everybody, and, um, we're gonna start, actually, our first item. Uh, I know that this COVID-19 handbook is like the, kind of that bad penny that we can't seem to lose and just keep showing up, um, but, um, Karen is here just to go over a couple of, uh, changes with us that we had to make in our handbook, and discuss with the committee those changes.
We were joking that we should just put COVID-19 handbook as permanent item on the agenda, because we don't seem to be getting away from it. But this is in reference to, um, the travel protocol. Um, since the state is opening up on Saturday, uh, we thought that it might be time to, um, revise our protocol. So basically, I took from Massachusetts for domestic travel and the CDC for international. So with domestic travel, it would be recommended for any staff or student traveling outside of Massachusetts to have a PCR test after returning. For international, it would be required. If, um, international travelers don't want to, um, test, they can quarantine. And it would be exempt for anyone who is out of state for less than 24 hours, anyone who's tested positive in the last 90 days, showing, um, proof of a positive test, and anyone who's been fully vaccinated, also showing proof of being fully vaccinated.
And it can be any test, right? The rapid or the
With the, with the international, it should be PCR. I should add that in there. It's in the top part, I just didn't carry it down to
Oh, yeah, I see it. Yep.
Yep, there it is.
Erin, you have a question?
So this eliminates the mandatory, the, the policy we made before April vacation.
Yep.
This would override that.
Yep.
So instead of requiring the testing for anyone who travels outside the state for more than 24 hours, it'd be recommended if it's within the U.S. and only required if it's international.
Do you have any questions for me? Yes.
Mine's not a question, just grammatical. I think that first sentence, BMR advises, but does not require. Oh, I think it's written, yeah.
First one. For international, okay.
Right.
Anyone else? Yeah, go ahead.
Does that include the new home tests?
The what?
The new home tests, the tests you can, like, purchase at CVS. They are PCR, I think, right?
The only test that's been approved by the state, only rapid antigen test approved, is the By Next Now. So if someone does do a By Next Now, that's fine, um, but it, it's hard to just say rapid antigen, because if someone does a different one, then that wouldn't be acceptable.
Okay. Anyone else? Entertain a motion to, to, the policy was amended. So moved. Karen, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
I liked it. All right, uh, Sarah and Tara, um, any other discussion in general? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose? Abstentions? All right, see you next meeting.
Hopefully, there's no changes in June at this point.
We get new D.C. guidance. Yeah, I'm sure we'll have something for the ball. Whole new, a whole new policy manual, Karen.
Thanks, Karen. Um, so the next two items are, are essentially threaded together, uh, together, excuse me. I want to talk just a few minutes about summer programming. This year, uh, because we've had such a different, um, experience, our students have had such a different experience, we started our summer, uh, planning, uh, it was late January, uh, early February, and, uh, the leadership team has been thinking very creatively about how do we work to accelerate student progress. You'll notice on, uh, the handout in your packet that's titled, Student Programming Overview, um, that underneath the Program Focus column, there is, uh, in parentheses, that equal focus on acceleration and not remediation. And so the reason that that is so important is be, and I want to define what that means, just so everybody has a sense of what we're talking about, because it is actually a very specific thing. What summer programming tends to, tends to do is, it's like a reset, and you kind of make up the stuff that you didn't do over the school year, right? Or the stuff that you didn't understand, or didn't learn, et cetera. Um, we actually want to take a significant shift away from that, uh, to a certain extent, and instead, uh, we have built programming around, not necessarily the stuff the students didn't get, but what are the things they actually need in order to access the upcoming grade level. So it might sound like that's kind of semantics, like it's six of one, half a dozen the other, but it's really not. And so let me give you a concrete example. Um, so for instance, in putting together our, our plan, each of the grade-level teams met and determined what are the, you know, the three or four key math skills, right? So the fourth-grade teachers told our instructional coach, here are the three or four math skills the students need to be able to enter into fourth-grade math, like, this is where we're starting, this is what we're gonna be focusing on. And they did the same thing with literacy. That's important, because our summer programming, which we've got these different kind of names for it, jumpstart, and, you know, uh, ramp up, and catch up, and whatever, um, the idea is that we want to front-load those skills, so that when the students step into, uh, the start of the school year, they've already had exposure to some of that. Um, and so similarly with our summer reading, we're gonna be doing the same thing, where a lot of the instructional work that we're gonna be doing in the programming will be designed around the summer reading text, uh, which we'll talk about in a minute. Um, again, so the students have those materials in their hands, they're done, they can actually start the year on a successful, on a successful note, instead of going into the school year, which we hope doesn't happen for any student, and not having read the book, right, and not having done the journal. Um, so what we're trying to do is think about what are some of the key skills and some of the key activities we need to make sure that students have under their belt, so that when they start the year, they actually have those skills and, uh, activities done and in place, so that they actually have a really good start. So, I don't know if that makes sense. I know it's, it's a little bit, you know, it's a little bit different, but frankly, it's, you know, we think we, as a principal team, we were talking about this, uh, this morning, we had a focus schools meeting with our Hudson Public Schools counterparts, and we were having this conversation around, even this idea of intervention really should be around acceleration, right? We think about intervention, we think about remediation, we think about, okay, well, you know, Matt, what were the three skills you missed? Let's go back and reteach. And it's not to say those things are bad, and that we shouldn't do some of that, right? So we're not throwing the, the baby out with the bathwater, so to speak, but if we only focus there, and we're actually not looking forward to what the key skills or concepts or standards are that the students need to be able to move forward into that next grade level, they'll never catch up, because they're, they're stuck in this cycle of remediation. So one of the things the coaches, the instructional coaches and I have, have, have looked at, uh, is a particular tool that the Department of Education, uh, has for each content area within, at each grade level, and then within each of those, they have particular strands. So like for math, you know, algebra, the algebraic skills, numeracy, geometry, et cetera, and you can actually click the grade, you click the strand, you click the standard, and then it shows you the spread. So if you're a seventh-grade student, it will show you what the standard looks like in sixth, seventh, and eighth. And so again, that's really important, because what we're gonna be doing is looking at, for those seventh-grade students, what does that eighth-grade standard look like? And let's make sure that the student's ready for that. Instead of the default, let's go back and look at that sixth-grade work again. Well, that's a problem if the student's going into eighth grade. So how do you kind of, how do you marry those, uh, those concepts together? So I just wanted to highlight that, because it's, it is a different approach, uh, and I'm really, really looking forward to taking a different kind of angle on it this year. Um, so what you have on your, um, Summer '21 Student Programming Overview is essentially just a high-level, or kind of like a macro bird's-eye view of, um, the instructional programming that we're gonna be offering this summer, uh, starting with our Extended School Year, or ESY program, uh, which Jill's here, and she can speak to any specific questions you might have around that. But of course, you know, that's driven by the student's individual education plan. So Jill and the staff for ESY will be developing very unique lessons and activities that are anchored to the particulars of each student's, uh, individual education plan, or IEP. Um, that, that is the only in-school program that's gonna be running in July and through August. Uh, you probably also noticed a shift in that, too, in terms of when we're offering the programming, which I'll get into in a second. The Boys and Girls Club tutoring program, uh, I know we've talked a little bit about, uh, we're really excited. I have to tell you, last Friday, um, so we have developed a partnership with Bellingham Public Schools, I think I mentioned at one of the last school committee meetings, because a hundred, 150 of the students at the Boys and Girls Club in the summer program are ours, and 100 are from Bellingham. So what we have done is we actually are doing some sharing of staff, resources, and we're cost-sharing the entire program. So, uh, last week, we had our, uh, staff, so our two counselors, our math and our literacy teachers, and I should mention, all of the staff for the summer program will be our staff. Uh, they're all BMR faculty. Um, myself, the superintendent in Bellingham, the assistant superintendent for teaching and learning in Bellingham, and they have curriculum specialists, like math, literacy, um, so their, um, specialists met with our teachers and myself and, um, and our counselors to start laying out the scope and sequence of skills and activities. Uh, it was awesome. It was so cool to see, we met in Bellingham, uh, in their middle school, but to see our teachers collaborating with their teachers and their content specialists to lay out different, um, ideas for, you know, for lessons and units and that kind of thing. We, we had our counselors, we'll have two counselors in the program, we had our counselors there, because, uh, we want to make sure that they're, um, supporting the instruction, and we want to make sure that they have a sense of what, you know, the math and the literacy work is gonna look like. So they're gonna be kind of, um, uh, complementing that, and doing, uh, some creative writing and some art therapy with the students around some of the ideas that I listed here, maintaining friendships, conflict management, de-escalation, uh, emotional, emotion identification and regulation. So we're really excited to, to be, uh, engaging in that partnership, and, uh, next Wednesday, uh, all of us are going to the Boys and Girls Club. So we're gonna meet with the director and, uh, the program director, get a sense of kind of the lay of the land, uh, and see, um, you know, how essentially the rotations are gonna work, um, on a day-to-day, and work, look at the grade spans, uh, of each of the student groups. Two of our summer tutors are also tutoring at the Boys and Girls Club now. If you remember, we put two tutors there when we reopened our schools, um, because then they really accelerated their after-school programming. So again, we wanted to have one more opportunity for students to get help. Um, so it took, I'm laughing, because it took the students a little bit of time to get used to that, because they're not used to, like, a homework help time. They usually, it's like, you know, let's run around for a couple of hours, so we were really careful to make sure we did, like, a bunch of running around, and then we did some homework help, and then some running around and some homework help, um, to try to find the balance, and the kids are like, what, what is this? What do you mean?
He needs to down and do it.
Yeah, so, um, but the parents were psyched. They were really happy that they were, uh, our teachers were there on hand to help the students after school. So two of our summer, uh, tutors also are working there now, which is really great. Um, and, um, at the end of the program, uh, summer program, uh, we will cost-share all the expenses, the payroll expenses with Bellingham. So we're gonna staff it, but they're gonna split all the costs with us, which is really great. Um, so for us to fully staff that for eight weeks, which is a long, that's a long program, at four hours a day, it's only gonna cost the district $16,000, which is actually not a lot, uh, I mean, it's a lot of money, but it, in terms of the services we'll provide, it, you know, that's for 350, about 350 students, R150, Bellingham's, and plus, we have, you know, a few students from Uxbridge, Mendon Upton, Hope Dale, North Bridge, um, but because the bulk are from BMR and from Bellingham, we're just gonna cost-share. So, uh, we're really happy about that. I think it's a really good model. It, it's showing some really good collaboration.
Yeah.
Um, and, um, from a cost perspective, it's, it's a very effective way to, to give our kids a lot for a little. Um, and we'll see how it goes. I, you know, I'm excited, we have never done this, so, uh, I'm really, um, really eager to get over there and actually see the groups and the rotations going. Um, so we are gonna be in session with them from June 28th to August 19th, but they, of course, run before, they start on June 21st, and they run after that. Um, I need to make sure our staff have at least a couple of weeks to breathe before the school year starts, so, um, I think they'll have a week, uh, in between before, uh, we start up again for next school year. So that's a little bit about the Boys and Girls, uh, Club program. Then we look at the elementary school. We're calling that a jumpstart, um, and essentially, there is, um, kind of two different concepts here. Um, we are looking at a summer enrichment extra practice group, and again, that's the, you know, what skills the students need to access their fall grade level, so that's, um, you know, that type of work. We're looking at low-tech to no-tech, I should say, in, in all of these enrichment, um, offerings. We want to get the kids off the Chromebooks, we want to get them with books in hands, you know, pencil, paper, projects, um, really hands-on learning, games. Um, so we're looking at our current students, you know, that are in school every day, that, you know, really need that additional support. We're calling it a jumpstart, because, you know, our concept of, again, let's not remediate and have it right at the end of June and through July, when everybody's burnt, give them time to decompress, recharge, and let's start the school year early, so to speak, right? So that's kind of the concept there. Um, we are also looking at something a little different for our youngest learners. Um, if you think about our first grade and kindergarten students that have been full remote, they have not been in school. So our, our littlest learners actually haven't done school, right? They've been at home, on Zoom, um, and so, we are looking at putting, uh, some very unique programming just for them, um, because before the school year starts, we want them to be in a classroom, learn routines. I know it sounds a little silly, but here's how you sit at a desk, here's how you raise your hand, you sign out, you write, like, the routines of the classroom. Um, right now, if you were to watch, uh, a Zoom class of, you know, all kindergarten or first graders, uh, students get up all day. They're going to the bathroom, they're getting a drink of water, they're in their pajamas, you know, um, those kinds of things, so it's like, we need to work on trying to reset some of those, uh, habits and practices before the school year starts, so that, you know, frankly, I don't want those students, and neither do the teachers, feeling that they're doing something wrong.
Right.
Because it's not their fault, they haven't been in class, right? So for us, it's about really giving them an opportunity, and it's optional, they certainly don't have to, uh, participate if their parents don't want them to, but we really want to give them a chance to reset, and for us to teach them how to kind of do school, if you will.
Well, and it gets them out of, I mean, not the benefit of getting them out of the house from the parent's perspective, but they've been at home.
Yeah.
I mean, just getting them
They have.
Used to being away from their parents is gonna be important.
And socialize in a class setting, and be, right, and, you know.
Yep.
Is this a half-day schedule, or a full-day schedule, or?
Half-day.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, uh, we're looking at, so here's kind of the interesting thing, too. Um, we are trying to be as flexible with students, families, and teachers as we can. Normally, like, a traditional summer school is very, it's rigid, it's like, you know, it's 8:00 to 11:00, Monday through Thursday, and that's it. And while, you know, we're gonna offer a similar model, we're also putting in some flexibility. So if we have a group of students that can't do 8:00 to 11:00, because they're babysitting their younger, you know, siblings, and their parents are at work, but they could do 4:00 to 7:00, we're gonna work with the staff and set up a group that's from 4:00 to 7:00. So we're trying, is, we are trying as hard as we can to be as flexible as we can, um, but we will have, like, traditional hours, too. In some families, just thrive in that structure, and it's fine, like, that's what they're used to, and they're okay with that, so we don't want to remove it completely. But we'll be looking at a half-day, like an 8:00 to 11:00, 8:30 to 11:30 kind of model. Um, and we will have transportation running, um, for the morning, for that more traditional, uh, time. So if the student can participate, but the parents are at work and they can't get the student there, Matt is working with Neil. Once we get the student lists and addresses, we'll actually set the transportation up. So you'll see all, well, and that's assuming the yes-sir, um, proposal is, is approved.
Is this a volunteer thing, or is this a, uh, school system reaching out to the parents?
Yes, it's the school system reaching out to the parents, and, uh, so we have, we have kind of three, how do I say? Like, three buckets of students. We have, like, you can do it if you're interested, like, you really should do it, and you have to. So we kind of have those three different
Are we gonna, or is anybody gonna reach out to people, not just the remote people, but people who homeschool, who chose the homeschool option, who may want to choose another one?
So we, yes, so my office is actually doing that. We're preparing a survey to send out to all of our homeschool families, even if you've homeschooled traditionally, not just for this year.
Right.
To see if, if we can engage them in, in wanting to return, um, and then offering some summer support to them as well through this. So we're actually preparing, Catherine's preparing that now. Um, then we look at the middle school level, and, uh, they're, they're calling it ramp-up. And again, it's a similar, we have, we have, we have an enrichment, and we have, or credit recovery, so to speak, right? We don't do credit in the middle school, but just so, to be consistent with language, because we have a credit recovery at the high school, so we're using some common language. But the enrichment, uh, at both the middle and the high school is, again, focused on those, you know, those three skills. They're gonna tackle one skill a week, and they're gonna do, uh, project-based learning. So again, we're trying to get the students, you know, we're not gonna come in and do IXL for three hours, like, we are trying to get them away from that. We're gonna actually do some direct instruction, some research, and, and each week, the students will complete a project that is anchored to the particular math or literacy skill.
Just stopping by, but if a student is in the, um, Boys and Girls Club program, but they're one of the, y'all should come to school, too? Are we gonna
So we talked about that.
Take them to the Boys and Girls Club?
So we talked, so that was one idea. We discussed, we, uh, having a shuttle that would be able to grab them and take them to the school and back.
Yeah.
If we have parents that don't want to do that, that's why we have the, the teachers there. So what they could do with the students would essentially be, you know, any of the, almost think of it as like a kind of a flipped classroom, where the teachers that are there would help clarify the, the learning for the student, they could work on the project during that time. Yep. Yeah, that was a, that was a different nuance for us to think about this year.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had, we had kind of teased out some ideas around that. Um, and then we do have a, a more traditional, you know, a student who, you know, missed X number of days, right, chronically absent, and, and just didn't pass seventh-grade math, or, you know, eighth-grade English. So, you know, we, we do have students in that situation, uh, and so we, we're gonna be offering them an ediscier course, both at the middle school and the high school level, however, we're gonna do that different, too. Um, you know, we were discussing this notion of, you, it's hard for some students to learn remotely anyways, never mind when it's really high stakes, and it's a course that they didn't pass the first time. I don't know why we assume that if you put them on it again, they're gonna get it the second time. That's the definition of insanity, right? So what we decided we're doing, uh, moving forward, is we're gonna assign a teacher to those students. And so, instead of, um, having the student come in every day for three hours, there will be essentially, um, times that the student will both check in some virtual and then in person. And so the teacher can actually adjust, you know, their, that math instruction for the group of students they're working with, based on the stuff that students aren't getting. So Teacher A, that's the math teacher at the middle school, will be able to see all the students that need to take that seventh-grade math course, and then be very specific about the instruction the student, each of the students needs. Um, instead of having them all come in and reteaching pre-algebra, or whatever the topic is, we don't want to do that. We want to make it very specific, but we also will, you know, we're not gonna leave the student to themselves to work on an ediscier course at home, which they, more likely than not, they're not gonna pass it anyways, on their own. They need the help. So, uh, we've created a different model for that kind of credit recovery piece that actually has the student specifically assigned to Mr. Erren But we also will, you know, we're not going to leave the student to themselves to work on an Edgacyr course at home, which more likely than not, they're not going to pass it anyways on their own. They need the help. So we've created a different model for that kind of credit recovery piece that actually has the student specifically assigned to Mr. Aronworth or whoever the teacher is. That's one of our staff.
Or people.
That's going to work. I'm a science teacher.
I was.
But that will help them with the, with the particular course. Some of the students have already started, particularly at the high school. We've had some students already start their, their credit recovery work. So again, the, the high school model is the same, and they're calling it a catch-up model. And then embedded in the literacy work and all of this will be our summer reading materials. And so just a few other pieces of information. We are starting to work. I know Jill is having discussions, or is about to have discussions with the school-based student support teams around identifying those students and families that will need, as we talked about, those care coordination over the 10 weeks of the summer to make sure that academic, socio-emotional behavioral support is in place as we continue to interview for our district-wide social worker. We're not going to wait, frankly. We're, we're starting that work now. So we'll get the list of students generated and we're going to start putting those care plans in place. So that work is, is underway. And again, the focus here is to make sure that we're looking at, how do we use the 10 weeks as progression, not to let 10 weeks go. They come back in September and we say, gosh, these kids are so dysregulated. They made huge steps back in the summer. You know, this is awful. They were better when they left. Like, I don't want to hear any of that this summer, this September. We're doing a lot to try to make sure that we mitigate as much as we can, that learning loss or that regression in skills, whether the behavior or academic, but also looking at how do we use the time to, to progress the student. We will have summer work packets and online platforms for all students in math. The schools are still finalizing those. They're trying to find a balance so it isn't, you know, IXL every day, and it's also not that calendar sheet where you have to do, if you remember the conversation a couple of years ago, like, an activity every single day and parents are ripping their hair out, trying to figure out this calendar thing. So we're trying to, we're not, you know, find just the right balance. And summer reading, which we're really excited about, you'll see in your ESAR overview, we actually want to order every student their own book. So they wanted, we are looking at doing grade-level reads. The teachers and principals have identified a book for each grade level. And at the high school, they had an option, and the, the administration sent out a survey to this high school student. Some of your children may have gotten the survey, and they could pick the book they wanted. So we have all the numbers, and if the ESAR proposal is approved by the committee, we'll move forward and order those. So that takes the work right off the plate for the parent, too, of trying to get to the library, order a book, figure, like, we'll take care of all that. And the students will leave the year with the book in hand and the reading logs that they need. So we're trying, again, to make this, you know, as clean as possible and take whatever barriers out of the way for our students and families that we can. So let me just pause there. Are there questions or thoughts, concerns?
So the kids at Boys and Girls Club, they are also going to be identified. It's not like a part of the overall Boys and Girls Club Day?
It is. So, yeah, so it's, so the Boys and Girls Club, it's whoever signs up for that. But to Jane's question, like, well, what if they're on that list of you have to be in this, you know, summer program at the school? Well, we'll see if we can work with the family to get the student here for at least part of the day. If not, then we would have the teacher that's here, here, assuming it's a middle school, but actually give the assignments and work to the teacher that will be at the Boys and Girls Club, so the student can still get that support.
So all students that go to BV, I mean, any kid that goes to Boys and Girls Club is doing tutoring?
Yep.
Part of the BV, BBT, Boys and Girls Club Day?
Yes.
It's like, what if there are sessions? But it's not, it's not, it's more like, let's play a math game or let's solve a puzzle or let's.
Get fun because it is summer vacation. Okay.
Yeah, so, so again, if you're, the only difference would be if you are a student that has to, let's, let's say, take, you know, eighth grade math, and you go to the Boys and Girls Club, then during that math block, if you can't, if you're, you know, you, for whatever reason, you know, you can't come here to the middle school for, for, for that work, we would have the work go there so that the student isn't penalized for that. We want to make sure that the student's still ready to go as a freshman here. But if you're, if you, you don't need any of that, and you're just going to the Boys and Girls Club, that's why we're partnering with Bellingham, and we're really working on, like, math, we're looking at all math games and like fun, hands-on activities. And for the literacy work, we're looking at creative writing, read-alouds, poetry, like, we're trying to get the kids interested in.
Keep learning.
And the stations would be like 30 minutes.
And like art there?
Yeah. So the goal is like to be fun at that.
Right. And then the jumpstart for K through five. I know you're saying it's required for some, recommended for others. I mean, how mandatory can you make this? Because especially those, like, I know, like, I don't expect, I have vacation that time. Like, I'm going away in August. Like, so our family's going to have issues with that? Like, are there going to be conflicts?
There might be. We.
But what about the kid that you're saying has to attend?
Yeah. So, so if you have a family that's going on vacation, they're going on vacation. I mean, that's, you know, that is what it is. If they're going for the whole month of August, I'm jealous. But we would ask them to participate for whatever time they're here. There will be summer reading and math activities so that there are things, obviously, the students can do. But if, if the question is, will the elementary student be retained if they don't participate? Well, no. I mean, we're not, we are looking at, yeah, I mean, we're looking at a very small number of students in general this year that would need to repeat, and most of it, frankly, we're having some pretty intense discussions with parents, and, and most of the parents are, are asking for it. But we're looking at each case very carefully. But that would not be the case for this.
Right. Okay. And will the information go out to everybody, or will they, will the, if you want to, people have to reach out to you?
No, 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 no. Yeah, no, the information will go out to everybody.
Do you, do you expect a full return in September? Without offering remote?
Yes. I don't, I do not, I do not think we will be, I'm very confident, frankly, that we will not be offering remote instruction in any capacity next year. I think we will, we will probably see in the next couple of weeks, the recommendation will be for a full return with, with just some masking. That's what we're hearing at this point from the commission. It's a little different, so, you know, just be patient with us as we try to figure out a better way to do this and to help support our students so that they have a strong start next school year. In addition to that, in your packet, there is a overview from the current BIBO president, Kim Whitley. They have done this in past summers. There is a summer, you know, kind of different themes each week that they run. That's more of like an enrichment camp. So we are going to be looking for approval to run that for this summer as well.
And this is still, still just for the Blackstone complex kids? It's not open to Millville, right?
No, I don't think so. I, I'm actually, I'm going to be having a discussion with Kim about that. I think that, I do believe it's open to, I think it's open to anybody.
Hasn't BIBO combined with? July 1st, it becomes the new PTO.
Yeah, and this is the summer program, so I would assume it's open to.
One is fully in June, though.
It looks like the, the second one ends on July 1st. So I mean, I think they are keeping
Oh, trying to get into, okay. I'll, I'll get an answer for that, Tara. I'm not sure.
I would just come out, because I know, like, especially the hybrid kids, don't they have mixed classes in some of these grades?
They do.
So that could be the.
I'd like to see it for both, right? Open to both. But I don't know if she's really asking for our permission for that.
I'll have a follow-up, or Dr. Remco will have a follow-up with Kim.
And they'd be following the same policies for in-the-building masks and?
Yes.
Whatever's in place at that time?
I want to entertain a motion to approve the BIBO camp. I don't know what else to call it. BIBO sponsored summer camp.
So moves.
Move by Carrie. I was going to say second by camp.
I'll second it.
Is there any more discussion about this? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote. All righty.
And then the last item under the summer work is staffing out. So that's been a, a challenge, but we are definitely making some nice progress. Because it has been such an interesting year, to say the least, you can see we've tried to be creative in terms of when we are scheduling programming. I'm asking the school committee to approve, for this summer only, moving the hourly rate from $35 an hour to up to $45 an hour for our certified licensed teaching staff, so our Unit A members. I think it will be a very helpful recruitment tool to staff all of the programs that you saw outlined before you a few minutes ago. We, as I mentioned, the Boys and Girls Club, we are looking for one more staff member, but the rest of it's fully staffed, which is great. And as far as the programming across the, the three different models we looked at, we're a little more than half-staffed. So I think we're in pretty good shape, but I know it would be really helpful to finalize the staffing and to give some incentive for us teachers to get on board and.
I'll make a motion for the summer pay rate to be $45 as, as written.
Second.
Second.
There's a motion to approve moving the hourly Unit A pay rate from $35 per hour up to $45 per hour as a one-time adjustment, only to be applied for the summer of 2021, and will revert back to the contractually agreed upon rate of $35 per hour at the start of the 21, 22 school year. Is there any discussion?
I have a question.
Yeah.
The difference in salary, do we have a capital fund that we're pulling that from? Or where's the money coming from?
Yeah, that's the, in the ESAR proposal.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? I'm hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as read, signify by a saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any of second? Here we go. I have my application tomorrow.
Thank you. Ms. Aronworth, would you like to give us an update on our elementary reorganization?
Certainly. So I can say that the people work has been well underway for some time. Teachers have been meeting with one another and working together. And similarly, the principals, I know, have been working with their incoming teachers. They've been getting into classes and getting to know the staff that will be joining them. So that has been underway. From an operational perspective, we're starting to have the rubber hit the road, almost literally. There were a lot of large boxes dropped off on Wednesday, to, last Wednesday, to both buildings, and the physical move is scheduled for the last week in June. The hope is we'll get everything moved and people situated through that week, and then everyone can decompress and go home for the Fourth of July weekend and just not think about it for a little while. One of the other pieces to this puzzle is working on some of the roads. There is specifically one section of roadway on Thayer Street around Orchard. I think it's between Orchard and Allard that is a little narrow. So I've currently been working with Turning Point Engineering. They did a survey of the area, put together some plans. They identified what parts the town owns and where specific boundaries are. We've had one tree company out and an excavation company out. It looks like what we're going to do is try to move in stages. So we're not anticipating ripping up the road and laying out an entire new street. The first step will be removing the trees that are physically in the way of buses, even moving to the side a little bit. After we remove the trees, we're going to patch some of the asphalt and kind of extend it a bit onto the sides where needed, and then we're going to see where that takes us. Eventually, in the long run, meaning a couple of years, a few years down the line, we probably will have to do a larger real laying of the, the street or reinforcement of the street that's there. But we're, we're fairly confident that, well, I shouldn't say fairly. We're confident that the work that we're going to do this summer will make sure that the buses can get through for the school year. The hope is, again, to start the tree work right after we get out of school, possibly that first week in June, and then once that gets underway, they're thinking that's about a week's worth of work, then we'll look at some of the excavation work. And the excavation work is actually, it's not digging up the road. It's more leveling out the sides of the roads because there's like, there's inclines going up to the houses. And I can say, I've already begun doing a little bit of politicking. Two of the neighbors were outside, and it's hard to miss the people walking around with clipboards in front of your home. They were lovely. One of the people, one of the gentlemen that I spoke to was like, great, get rid of this tree, get rid of that tree. I can't see anything, and then people come whipping around this corner at 80 miles an hour. Another young lady, Sandra, who has been there for some time, was very supportive. She wants to make sure that the kids can get to school, just doesn't want her stone wall to be completely devastated, and it won't be. And there's a couple of trees on her property that she also won't mind seeing go, and that's part of the plans. But we will have a couple of more estimates from tree removal and from the excavation, but.
Thank you.
We should have, we should have things settled relatively soon, and that work should start pretty much right when school gets out.
Matt, thank you for doing that. I know people get really nervous when they think they're going to lose their yard, so being there to talk to those people is really, to the people is very important. So thank you.
My pleasure. And the people were terrific. I have to say, I want to thank them, if they're listening, which they may not be. But they, they were really nice to talk to, and I think that they are supportive of the entire process, which is really encouraging. That's, are there any questions from that perspective of the move, of the organization?
Do we have an estimated cost on that group work that we're?
The estimate has not come back yet. So I don't, I don't want to misspeak. I am assuming that all of the work will be, it, it's not going to be tremendous. I think everything that's needed would be under $45,000. Not that that's nothing, but it's, it's very different than a $300,000 project to, you know, redo the, the street. So, but I will, I will keep everyone apprised when I get the numbers.
And just to piggyback on that, where is that funding from?
That would more than likely come from, I think we had, we actually have money in the budget that we could.
You have the E and D money.
The E and D money that we rolled in for the, which we'll talk about further. But we have that, what we expected to be offsetting state revenue losses.
So can, can we, do we have to spend that before July 1st?
We need to encumber the E and D money.
We need to.
Yep. Or it just goes back into E and D.
Is the plan, because you spoke of buses passing on that short piece of road being difficult or impossible. I remember many times in that, you just have to pull over and stop usually if there's a bus coming with snow and stuff, and on a good day, it's easier. But is the plan still to stagger the buses leaving the complex?
Yes.
And, and they're not?
But, so, so the plan is to stagger the buses leaving the complex and getting to Millville? But that means that there will be buses leaving Millville while there are buses trying to get to, get to Millville. So that's, that's why this small stretch is pretty important.
So with that being said, has it been talked about letting everyone leave the complex at once, and that, and that way they're all going in the same direction? I mean, because kind of.
The timing.
But placing them on Brethellet Way is an easier road to, you know, if, if they're in line to be able to unload in Millville, there's more room on that street to pass if needed than passing each other on Thayer Street.
I don't think there's enough room at the complex to have all the buses all at one time. I don't think there is.
Because they're not all going to the complex first and then Millville. They're going to be some going to each and then?
There's going to be some going, they're going to go to the complex first.
Everyone is going to the complex.
It's Millville, Mill, there's difficulty getting all of the buses to Millville. So it's, they're going to leave in, in waves from the complex to Millville, then get out of Millville. If they all went to Millville at once.
Well, they can't unload all at the same time, but what I'm saying is, like, they could be staged on Brethellet, waiting to move up if, because Brethellet. Because Breathlet, before you get to that loop at Millville, is definitely a two-lane road compared to Thayer Street.
I can speak to Neil, and we can see what other options exist.
Asking if it was explored, I guess. I'm sure it was.
I don't like the idea of children sitting on a bus in the roadway with the bus running, waiting to move. That's dangerous.
I guess technically Breathlet is a road, but it more...
It's not, yeah, it's not really. I was thinking the same thing. It's sort of like a road, but a driveway.
Can I ask? And I'm sure this has been discussed before. But why is SD not paved all the way through?
Why is what?
SD.
Oh, I've always wondered that. I have no idea.
Is it a fire access road or something?
It's like a path.
Yeah.
I've heard that it's wetlands. I've heard that it's just that nobody wants to make it. The people who live on SD don't want it paved, which I get. I live on a dead end. I want it to stay that way. But, because then you could...
Go off the other way.
Yeah, just go out the other way.
I believe, and I might be...
Yeah, that's true, too.
That when the school was being built, that there was an issue at town meeting in that the homeowners on that street did not want it to become the main entrance to the school.
That's what I heard.
I believe. Oh, did you hear that?
I heard that, too, along with like, there's a wetlands or endangered species of bug.
If a boss comes down that hill and then had to turn on, I think you'd have stuck and restuck.
Someone told me also that that wouldn't work.
In winter, they'd go right in the house.
Told me about the traffic.
Yep.
You'd have neighbors.
When I went to Millville the first time, the very, very first, that's how it sent me. And I'm sitting like this, and I'm like, hmm. Well, I can't be late for this until I get over there.
I just, I've always wondered about that, and I've never, I've gotten like several different answers. But yeah, I heard.
I get it.
And I do believe the same people still live there.
Yes.
Probably.
From what I've heard.
People come to Millville and they don't leave.
You're one of them.
I know, that's why you don't leave. All right.
Anything else?
Anyone else? Okay, moving on.
So the next piece in this report is there's some smaller capital projects that we wanted to bring forward to the committee and see what the appetite was. Moving forward on some of these. So essentially, you have two different sheets with two different types of investments. You have a potential field and court investment sheet, and there's a potential security and safety investments sheet. I'll go through the field and court investments first. As we have seen way too clearly, there's a lot of work that needs to be done to our athletic fields and the entire, all of the courts and the track. But it's definitely not something I think that the district can financially bite off in one chunk. So we did separate this into a few different smaller projects. And you can see there's work that's identified for the baseball field. That totals approximately thirty-seven thousand dollars worth of work. There is work for the softball field, which is significantly more mainly because of the larger backstop, the fencing that would need to be added in. So that's about sixty-nine thousand dollars. The tennis court resurfacing would be about thirty thousand. To reconstruct it would be a significantly larger number, as you can see. And then you can see the track and field numbers below as well. On the safety and security investments, the high school is still not completed with respect to the security cameras. So that's one project that we identified as, we believe, a priority. And that is an estimate to put in everything that's needed to cover the stairwells and all of the exits. Then there's, Dr. DeFalco and I, since we've come in, we've been trying to make sure that we've hardened the exterior of our buildings to try to eliminate and/or minimize the risk of people coming into the building that are unwanted. So these next two projects are to do that. The safety doors would essentially be at both Millville and the complex. There would be two new sets of doors stopping anyone walking in the entrance from going right into a hallway that allows the students to have access. The numbers that you see here, I will say, those are construction costs only. And I since found out that we would need to make sure that we had an architect to do the designs, and we probably need an OPM to oversee the work. So I'm actually estimating that each one of those projects are going to be about a hundred thousand dollars, as opposed to in the sixty range. Which brings us to the last section on the security investments, which is significantly smaller, but something that I think would be very worthwhile and something that is a good interim, should we decide to hold off on adding all of the new doors. Every time that I speak to a safety expert, sadly, they will emphasize all of these doors and all of these layers of protection that you're putting in. They're really just about the time that it buys you to get the police notified and get people out of the building. And one of the most effective ways they've referenced is having the window laminates on the glass. That being, there's no such thing, I'm told, as actual bulletproof laminate. But they are resistant to the point where the glass won't shatter, and it could potentially keep somebody outside while they're trying to break through the window. The film is sturdy enough that it could deter people forty-five seconds, a minute. And quite honestly, in these types of situations, that's an eternity. So from a safety, security investment perspective, I certainly would be recommending, and again, I leave the conversation to the committee. I would recommend moving forward with putting laminates on all of the glass in each one of the fronts of the buildings. I'm thinking, that was an old estimate that I had gotten, so it may cost twenty thousand to do everything. I also, knowing the concern for the baseball and softball teams and the amount that it would cost to invest in those, I would lean toward recommending doing work on the baseball field, doing work on the softball field, potentially resurfacing the tennis courts in the interim. Because as was referenced before this meeting started, you know, we have a whole capital planning process going on now. And who's to say what we're going to want to do with the tennis courts? So do you invest, to invest two-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars into them to potentially decide we want to have them elsewhere? Might not, you know, I'm not sure, but it's not a worthwhile investment. Similarly, with the track and field, I think at this stage right now, it's, we don't have the capital to put in three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars. We certainly could repair the fence at the discus area for a few thousand, which makes a difference. But my recommendations with respect to these investments would be to tackle the baseball and softball fields, to resurface the tennis courts, to do the small ancillary pieces, like the discus area, and then to complete the surveillance system at the high school and also add the laminates to all of the school entryways. Even on a high estimate, I was looking at this as approximately two-hundred, like on a very high estimate, approximately two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars. And I referenced that number, as Dr. DeFalco mentioned before. We do have the E and D that we initially put into this year's budget that we are not going to be needing because the state revenues came in.
Was that four-eighty or four-thirty?
It's four-sixty-five.
It was four-sixty, yeah, it was four-sixty.
It was more in between.
Yeah.
Fifty-five or sixty-five?
I think it was sixty-five. We obviously could double-check that, but then...
Yeah, I can double-check. I've been referencing it in my mind as four-sixty. So I think it's like four-sixty-five, somewhere in that ballpark.
And even with that, we still estimate we'll have...
Significant.
Funds left over this year. Yeah. So we're in a good spot to be able to do some of this?
That is true.
Anybody have any questions before we do a motion?
How long does the resurfacing of the tennis courts get us? Like, is that a couple years?
I think that it's at least a couple of years, but I can't say definitively. I'd need to speak to one of the companies.
It should be about five.
Yeah.
It's what the traditional court system does.
Some of these numbers...
But again, the tennis courts may have underlying damage from before, structurally. So no matter how you...
You just kind of...
How you patch them up, it's still going to have a whoop.
Take a crack in there.
If there's a crack in it, depending on the depth of the concrete, that can be sealed. And then the rubber laminate coating across the top will further seal that. And that'll buy another five to ten years for sure.
Right, that's nice.
So I was going to say, admittedly, some of these estimates are from old quotes that we've gotten over the past couple of years from our last athletic director. We do have people coming through and giving us new estimates. But for each of the areas that I identified, I was giving a potential not to exceed, when I gave that two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand numbers. I'm looking at the baseball field and saying, it probably wouldn't exceed fifty thousand dollars. When I look at the softball field, I'm saying it probably wouldn't exceed eighty-five thousand dollars. The tennis court resurfacing, probably not go over thirty-five thousand dollars. The discus area fence, I know shouldn't cost five thousand dollars, but I put it in as not to exceed that five thousand dollars.
There may be other little, there may be patching they can do on the track and stuff like that.
And there may be some work that can be done to the jumping pits and things of that nature, just getting the wood fixed up and really beautifying it a bit as well. And then for the surveillance system at the high school, that is a live quote that we just received. We had Dave Loudon, our resource officer and the high school administration, go through the building with Omega Alarm, who oversees our security systems. And they identified every area that we potentially should have surveillance. So that is a seventy thousand dollar, pretty much on the nose. And then, as I said, the laminates, I would estimate at about twenty thousand.
Does anybody in the class propose any, all, or some of this? Have to make a motion before we discuss?
Yeah.
I would make a motion that we vote on the baseball, softball, tennis courts, the repair to the discus fence, the high school security system, and the window laminate at the schools.
Okay. All right. So do you want to second that? Tara? Thank you. All right, Sarah, go for it.
I was looking at the safety doors. But we don't anticipate the baseball fields or softball fields going anywhere, even if the Capitol Committee, I mean, we don't have another space, right? Okay. That was my only question about the fields.
Well, to build a new, to build a new field, to level and build a new field, would be a significant capital expense.
Right.
Not in the proposal that we received from the company.
Right. Okay.
About, I put it that way.
But they did already mention that if we wanted to build off of the high school, we'd probably be going backwards towards the fields and moving fields to the front. They did vaguely say that to us. However, in my opinion, that would be part of the...
That'd be a ways off, too.
Long-term project.
Yeah, it's years.
Right. That's years away, where we would be, we might be sitting here saying, "Well, at least we don't have to repair this dugout now." Right. You know? And hopefully, that's newer and better fields, if, that we can implement into the construction. Usually, that's how you get your stadium seating.
And I did, I was saying earlier, I don't believe it was to the entire committee, we were just having a few, through the course of the day, there were a couple of questions going back and forth. And we're trying to make sure that the kids are not, that the fields by the softball and baseball field are not getting destroyed with the football practices and the soccer practice. And the athletic director and myself went this past Monday evening to the Parks and Rec Department in Blackstone, and we asked for the use of the soccer field at JFK, or AFM, that side of the complex, which we were approved for that. So we're hoping to do that probably for just this one year and see if it's possible, if it's possibly a good fix to help keep the outfield in a little bit of better condition.
But can we talk about soccer for a minute? Because I don't see soccer on any of this. And, I mean, I happen to be a soccer mom, but I just feel like there's an equity issue on soccer. So soccer was supposed to get fencing put along those woods where it goes into that bog or whatever is there, and the three thousand balls go in there, and the kids are going in there. You know, it's like Tickville. And now we're saying high school soccer isn't even going to be able to practice. They're already not allowed to play on the top field for years now. They used to be able to, and then that kind of stopped. And it was, we were told it was a lining, a line, lining issue. You know, you have to reline it for soccer versus football, et cetera, et cetera. But, you know, I just caution that we're, not only are we not focusing any kind of capital on soccer, but now we're saying, move on over to the elementary school so that we protect, it's their field, that that field was, is the soccer field. So it's not like...
Yeah, the conversations, I can assure you, were not about moving soccer away. It was just trying to figure out where we could put teams with the limited space that we have to make the most of all of the field space in the district. So as I said, it's certainly, the idea is a temporary one, at the very least, to start. The field at the complex, it's well-maintained, and it's a really nice...
Because BMYSO put money into it. That's why it looks like that. And I think, I mean, I think they put the sprinklers in there. So I just, I mean, I caution that soccer has been displaced multiple times over the years. And now it sounds like that's on the table again. So I'm just putting it out there.
What is the plan for all of the fall sports? Because all of the ones listed on here are all spring sports. So this past fall, we had football not using the field at the track. So boy soccer, girl soccer, and field hockey played their home games. But each sport only had one home game a week with the shortened COVID schedule. So where will all of those teams in the fall be playing?
Yeah, so from what I understand at this point, it looks as though the fall schedule, and it's still early, but would run as it normally runs. So as far as the frequency of the home games, away games, from what we're hearing, is it should run on a more typical schedule. So my sense is that we would default back to that usual practice and game schedule. Did I, I'm not sure if that's what you're asking.
The previous schedule was, though, that only football used that field. And then I believe field hockey was able to play home games on that field, where soccer never played up there.
Which field are we talking about?
The football. Funny, funny, football is the newest sport, but now it's the football field.
The one on the track.
I'm just trying to figure out if we're not putting...
The track field.
Anyone down with the baseball and softball fields. But only football can play up on the track.
Currently.
How we're shifting three other full teams around.
Where does soccer play?
Where did field hockey play? Practice, not play.
Practice, they practice below the track.
Below the track.
Like dirt. Like they're the closest to the track.
Yes.
By the baseball field that's out front?
Just picture Pigpen.
It's where the discus is.
That's boys soccer, yeah, soccer practice is out there.
Before the hill elevates up to the track.
Nobody. They don't use these.
Right. We, right, that was the year we were displaced. We
Field hockey.
That soccer was displaced. We um it's a it's a, I think it's angled, and I don't know that it's the exact size it's supposed to be.
Right.
I think those are the two two. And again, I
It gets so muddy too.
It's been some years.
So where does soccer play?
The cross-country kids I watch run through and like so
They play on the back field.
On the back field of the high school going down that hill.
Which is like the outfield of baseball.
Yes, exactly.
So that kind of leads to my question as well is um I I I think it's important for us to invest in our sports. Um, and I don't, I think our fields themselves need a lot of maintenance as well. And I, does that, I mean, because we can put, you know, the fencing up, which I support. Um, you know, I was also part of the softball boosters club who was trying to raise money for that. Um, but it does, the the field conditions are still really pretty terrible. Um, I know as far as soccer goes, you know, there's, they roll their ankles all the time because the grass is very clumpy and unkept.
So to your point, Pam, was there another fence that was going where?
So they had talked about doing, no, the opposite side, on the right-hand side of, so say where the the uh band trailer is, if you go straight down, that is all like woody marsh.
Yeah, right, right, right.
And so that's where the net is. So you're shooting at the net, you miss the net, and it goes into whatever that is.
So could we add
So at some point, we talked about doing like even a one of those orange ugly fences to just stop at least some of them from going out there.
Now, is the ba- the big backstops being that are here outlining, is that what that's gonna cover? Because that was part of the softball plan. Was the fencing to avoid all the foul balls going?
That's part of the field, the field, the um baseline fencing, I know, is to try to stop the balls from going out into into
Whatever is there. I've never ventured there, I'm not gonna lie, but I've seen lots of kids going there.
So under the baseballs?
Well, and to to y- you you raise, you raise an excellent point about the maintenance of the field and the grass, which is the other piece that is in your in your package, which is we are identifying the fact that if we're going to be investing in these in these fields and in our teams' spaces, that we need to maintain them. And you have before you a proposal. Again, I don't want to jump the gun too fast.
Yeah, yeah, let's like hold that, Matt.
We'll hold off on this and talk about the specific capital stuff.
Yeah.
Well, in just in my listening to the discussion here, uh, i- it's evident that soccer is being displaced. A- and you know, coming in, being new to the committee, uh, trying to be fair across all the sports and everything else, and not knowing the politics of how the football field got or the upper field was built, established, and maintained to this point. Uh, I'll be the bad guy and say that the soccer team needs to play up there. If we're putting limestone down to mark the field, then we need to come to the future and somehow get a paint sprayer and paint the lines on the field. If that's not happening, then we should do that. A sprayer's not that expensive. We can also paint over that those lines. If it's a white line, a yellow line, whatever, that can be painted over for soccer and or football. So there's there's options there. There is no reason why a high school athlete should be turning their their ankle while they're practicing or playing a game on an unstable field. You're not gonna do it to the football program, so why should you do it to the soccer program? You're not gonna do it to the football program. Granted, the football program in most states are gonna brings in the money so that all the lesser sports have the opportunity to play. But we should be fair and across the board so that all athletes are protected. Whether it's the outfield, the infield, fences, backstops, what have you. And a field hockey's practicing on a field that has an angle on it, that's a safety hazard from the beginning. They'll tear up knees, ankles, and or anything else. So you can end a a high school athlete's career before they even get started as a freshman by twisting an ankle, tearing up a knee
Absolutely.
On a bad field.
So so we have before us a motion. Somebody would like to amend it, we can see if people are willing to amend it, but it's not a discussion of who gets to play where. It's a discussion of capital how we're fixing fields. So I want to bring us back to that discussion. And then if somebody wants to have another discussion of, you know, ensuring that the fields are accessible by more than one team, that's another, that's a different motion.
I I think um we don't have the information, like, you know, I mean, we're we're talking about the soccer piece of things. We don't have that here. So, you know, I mean, it's just something I I we can talk about in the future, but I think moving forward on these projects for for me anyway, I think moving forward on these projects are important. Um, we have the opportunity and the funding to take care of them. They're not things that don't need to be done, you know? So, I mean, I just, again, want to um, uh, let's, I think we can vote on these. Um, and then, you know, I would a- I would respectfully ask that we we talk about the soccer piece of things, um, you know, with the athletic director, et cetera, whoever has to do that. But um, I think these things are important. Like I said, I I I this tennis court issue has been there for as long as I've been on the committee. Maybe before.
We were gonna patch it.
So.
Anyone else discussing around these projects that were on the motion? I'm hearing none. All those that in favor of the motion as presented, do the baseball field, softball field, resurface the tennis, do some work around the track, particularly the pits or whatever.
Discus.
Discus area.
Uh, do the lamination of doors and
Windows.
And windows and do the security camera.
Is this um something that would start immediately, or does it displace our teams next spring like they were this year?
We were trying to get the work done as as quickly as possible.
So they would have access to their fields for next season?
I don't know that anybody can guarantee that.
But they're not on those fields right now, so the work could start right away.
I was gonna say, and to Tim to Tim's point, the safety of the the safety of the players is of the utmost importance, and that's actually what that plays into why we were looking for other spaces for them to to use so that they're not rolling their ankles. And then we ended up moving the softball and the baseball to Roosevelt Field, and then they appealed to the district saying, we actually, we don't want, yeah. They didn't want
Yeah, don't move us back.
They don't, they didn't want to come back.
Yeah.
They really liked playing on those fields because it would, they were safer and well maintained.
Dugouts and fences.
Yep, they had the dugouts and the fences, which kind of led to this whole process. Like, we really need to evaluate all of it and start with fixing what we can and
All right, we we are in the middle of actually taking a vote.
Sorry, apology.
Matt, that's okay.
Jane, does this, I just want to ask one clarifying question. Does this motion include the up to amounts? Because I know all these industries are short of every supply you can have, and so are we capped at the amounts that Matt mentioned?
We, it was not in the motion.
Okay.
The motion was to do the projects.
And we're not adding not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand?
Nope. Unless you wanna, somebody wants to amend the motion.
I will amend the motion to uh not to exceed two hundred and sixty-five thousand.
Who seconded the original amendment? Terry, you're okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so for the amendment, is everyone okay with the not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five thousand dollars. Say aye.
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 Opposed or abstentions? Okay, so now we're back to the original. Do those projects with a working budget not to exceed two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Okay.
Great.
All right, so would somebody like to request that we have a, on our next agenda, a discussion of um not only where people practice, but potentially the field they use at games?
I think that will be important going forward.
With with visual aids. Visual aids, it's like having trouble following this.
Mike Buckley is listening, could you do a little uh He probably does.
For the June tenth agenda, we'll we'll put it on?
Yes.
You got it.
And for all sports, right?
Okay.
Yeah, I I think we just need to take a look at the whole, you know, where are they, because you can practice somewhere and play somewhere else, but if you never um play on the field that you play your games on
That you practice on the field, correct.
It's disadvantaged. So you need that, if you're gonna play on a field for your game, you need some access to it. So I don't know, we need to look at
So we want a field, practice, and game schedule?
Yep.
Is that right? Okay.
Just a discussion, you know, who's where and
Yep.
And maybe maybe the why, because we all have
Okay.
Very different reasons for why, you know, how these rules got to be there in the first place, and and it sounds like none of us really know. Um, we've all heard our rumors, but none of us really know.
Okay.
And I'm sure maybe Keith does, or, you know, maybe somebody does.
Well, and and, you know, just because we've always done something one way doesn't mean we have to keep doing it that way. So if there are changes we should make, yeah, then we should make them.
No, but if somebody gave us a hundred thousand dollar donation that said the football field will only be a football field, we have to honor that too. I mean, I don't think that happened.
Yeah.
I don't believe that happens, but, you know, I I don't know what, I don't know what hand chafes are done.
Yeah, I don't like the hand chafes.
Find those napkins, Jason.
We'll we'll get the why.
We we actually were working on
Napkin contract somewhere.
Yeah.
Napkin contracts.
Yes, a napkin MOA.
Napkins, we have a lot of napkins.
If we could get a good a good display and and presentation, that would be awesome.
Yeah, sure, thanks. Okay. Matt, do you want to go on to the other piece regarding fields? And I think, Amanda, I think that this might address the question you had about
Gotcha.
Maintenance, because that's a big issue.
So uh we are recommending a small reorganization from our custo- in our custodial staffing. Um, and some of the costs that we currently pay for from con- from other contracted vendors. Currently, if you take a look on the left side of the of the sheet, you'll see that we have a split custodial position, which is an evening position. It's a fifty percent of the time at the high school, fifty percent of the time at the middle school. Um, it was budgeted at fifty thousand dollars for this upcoming year. I did speak to uh both Willie and Scott, the head custodians at each of the buildings, and asked if they felt we would be able to reorganize a bit and potentially if we were able to introduce someone to keep the grounds up and come in during the off-seasons, would they be able to go with a halftime split between the two buildings? And they both were in agreement that that would be a good idea, and they and they supported this. So on the left side, you'll see we have that split custodial position, which was budgeted at about fifty thousand dollars. Our average groundkeeping costs uh for the eighteen, nineteen fiscal years, the last couple have really been nothing that we could gauge things by. Uh, but the average was about sixteen thousand dollars in overtime costs for the custodians. And the average field lining costs that we have currently are between twelve and sixteen thousand dollars. And we also have the athletic director stipend, which is six thousand dollars. So what Dr. DeFalcone and myself looked at was, um, I know we were trying to figure out how we could utilize the positions that we have to reorganize. And we were saying we would turn it into a point-five split custodian position that was in the evenings. And the anticipated cost for that would be twenty thousand dollars. A point-seven-five groundskeeper for the daytime would be about thirty thousand dollars. And then we have field lining payments of about fourteen thousand dollars. And the athletic director stipend of six thousand dollars. The thought was, given the current staffing, and we talk about keeping people on, um, we've been relatively happy with the athletic director position now. Um, so the thought was, it might make sense if this person was interested and and that's how it works out, to kind of combine the two positions. Because right now, the athletic director is just a stip- is simply a stipend. Um, but this proposal would be morphing, so to speak, the two positions where one individual could serve as the athletic director, but would also be the groundskeeper, maintaining the fields.
Doing the field lining.
Doing the field lining and knowing where where everything was.
Can I just speak to that too? Because I my my sense is your your minds are probably reeling around this, and so I I want to say something um that probably everyone's thinking. We haven't and we won't make a position for a person. So I want to put that out there now. As as kind of uh easy as it was to assemble a concept like this, it would be just as easy for us to dis- to 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 unpack it and pull it back apart. Um, what we're trying to do is get multiple bites of the apple without actually, at a cost saving. So we're trying to, again, we always look at that same buck and say, how can we use it different? So that's all, you know, so just know that we understand that if that's kind of the the thought process that's there, but no, it's just as easy to pull that position back apart.
So I'm I'm just having trouble um visioning how this would work scheduling-wise for this person in this position. It's being that they, so they'd be a point-five custodial position.
No, the point-five, the point-five custodial position would be a separate position.
A separate person.
That's a separate person.
The man of all trades.
Becomes a halftime, which frees up money for the groundskeeper.
Yep.
So this would be
So we're eliminating a point-five custodial.
Well, we're changing it to a point, we're changing it to a point-seven-five groundskeeper.
And we're taking the groundskeeping work off of the custodians that are doing it during the day.
So there's actually more more
So who's doing the groundskeeping?
Right now the
That would be the AD.
Right now, the custodians are doing it. So that comes off their plate.
The four thing, the three
This goes away.
This, no, it doesn't go away. This becomes a halftime person. Instead of a full-time person who goes to two buildings, it's a halftime person who goes to two buildings.
But so under the proposed, it says point-five split custodial.
Right, because it's split between the high school and the middle school.
But that's, so that's not in the job description of
No, it's not. Those are two different people.
So the athletic director is the groundskeeper and also lining the fields.
Yep.
Correct.
Yeah, so it'd be about a fifty
Fifty thousand.
Thousand dollars, yeah.
My question there is, how would that uh go into job descriptions with the union contract?
So we had a discussion with uh Unit A last September. I'm thinking when Robert came on. I think it was September. Because it's a Unit A stipend, um, and we posted it, and um we had to then post externally because we didn't get the candidates we were looking for.
Mm-hmm.
And so we interviewed everybody, and the high school uh administration selected Robert. And so, you know, we followed the contract, we posted as we were supposed to, and the union was fine with us um issuing the stipend to a non-Unit A member because we had posted it internally.
Good.
So so that, that's a great question. And from that perspective, we've like, we've gotten over that hurdle already.
But this position would be in both unions, right? The groundskeeper custodial piece, but we're not gonna call it that. We're not calling it it this
The groundskeeper would be Unit C.
Typically, a groundskeeper would be in Unit C.
Yep, yes.
But what you're saying is that position will then go to Unit A as a whole?
No, the p- the position would remain the same, but in the event that we wouldn't fill the athletic director stipend from Unit A, which has been the case for the la- for this past year, then someone outside of Unit A could take it. So this person would be a Unit C member, but they'd be getting that one stipend that would be from Unit from Unit A.
How does this position get posted since?
It would be posted as a point-seven. So again, to Jay, to Dr. DeFalcone's point, these are all really separate pieces. The point-five split custodial position, we have posted and have had that filled before. That would be posted as a point-seven-five groundskeeper.
Yep.
That would be the only, that would be the posting. Then there'd be an internal posting for the athletic director stipend. If no one applies for the athletic director stipend, which nobody has expressed interest at this point, then that would be open to people outside of Unit A. So then, like we did this year, someone outside someone outside of Unit A could get that stipend.
And that, when I was saying that that's a hurdle we've been over, because we did it this year, so we have some precedent that we'd be able to make.
And quite frankly, if someone from Unit A.
We're not going to have a job description that says, "BMR, groundskeeper slash athletic director."
No.
No. And theoretically, if someone in Unit A wanted the athletic director stipend and was going to adequately fill that job, we'd still hire a .75 groundskeeper.
Right, right, right.
If.
And then we'd contract out for the field lining.
Or the groundskeeper could do the field lining.
Or the groundskeeper could do the field.
Yeah, which is fine.
Okay, I think I'm good on that part, but I have a question. I feel like, you know, we're talking about the, the groundskeeping as a safety concern. What qualifications would we look for, for a groundskeeper? I mean, do you have to need to know grass and? You know, I mean, I don't know what it looks like. I guess that's my question. But it seems like the, the qualifications of an athletic director may not include the same skills that you need to be a groundskeeper and know how to fill divots and.
So what's interesting about that is, maybe, but not necessarily. So, so what I mean by that is, in, in some aspects, I would agree with exactly what you're saying. But in another aspect, if you have a, if you have an athletic director that really understands the fundamentals of the fields, and frankly, the games that they're playing on the fields, that actually could be a good fit. If they understand, like, somebody was mentioning something about an angle on a field. Like, I would have no idea about that. But somebody who's an athletic director and has that skill set, that knows the specs and the size of everything, would probably have a sense of what that would need to be, and how to maintain that.
I guess I would love to see that job description, because I, you know, I'm picturing some, I mean, I guess, I, I guess, working at a. While I'm talking about the groundskeeper piece itself. I mean, working at a golf course, our grounds per, person is.
Yeah, but they go to college.
Knows a lot.
They go to college for that.
No, I was. That's why I'm thinking, like, I don't, I don't know, I could kill anything.
Job description, because we've had a groundskeeper before.
Okay.
We have one.
Okay. If we could resurface that, it would be great, from the depths of the paper.
I have actually seen that in, from, actually, the high school I went to. Our athletic director was also the groundskeeper, and he lined the fields.
Yeah, I'm less worried about the line. I mean, the, you know, we have, lining the fields, you need to know the measurements. But I mean, I think, you know, I'm more worried about the groundskeeping and how, how do you fix a problem?
Because we know we have problems.
So, so.
It's not like they're maintaining something great.
But, but from my perspective, I, I personally like the idea of having a dedicated person as opposed to relying on volunteer. I mean, they still may need to get some volunteers. But we have really relied on volunteers to build what we do have. I mean, I know we're saying it's not great, but what we do have has really been a result of community volunteers. And we all know, in our schools and in our communities, that's getting harder and harder and harder. If you don't have the time. So I like the idea of somebody who's dedicated to that, and not pulled into a building, or pulled over here, or pulled over there, but is going to try to keep these fields.
Well, that's it. And so much of our, so much of our green space, as we just learned, and, and have known, but is dedicated to our athletics program. So to me, it's almost like a hand in glove, from that perspective.
It's, it's, you're right. It's almost essential at this point that we have someone maintain the, the level and consistency of every field that the athletes play on.
Well, and the, the key word that you just used, and I was going to circle back to, is maintain. I would not be suggesting that our grounds, the person we hire for groundskeeping is necessarily going to fix all of the fields. From the condition that they're in now, I'm not expecting a landscaping engineer. I'm just, the, the maintenance piece is where I think that the, the fields have fallen into the state that they're in, because we haven't stayed on top of this stuff, and now they need some major overhauls. But the groundskeeper would be there for the continual maintenance.
And I guess, oops, sorry, go ahead, Sarah.
Is, is this essentially an athletics field groundskeeper, or is it going to be?
It would be a regular ground, it would be a groundskeeper position.
So this person is looking at the, you know, when, I, I just remember Jason with the flowers in the front of the building, you know?
Garden beds, the outside of the building.
Or Tara and I's battle with the bees in the courtyard. So this.
This person's going to be coordinating volunteers then, because there's no way.
But just, I mean, just like, it's not just an athletic position. It's a, all of our greens.
Yes.
Wasn't there something in the job description for the groundskeeper for snow removal?
I believe.
So that would be staying?
And when the, and when the seasons, in, in this position, will go inside as well, when there's.
Not a need for the groundskeeping, they'll be hel, they'll be assisting with the custodial, with custodial or building maintenance issues.
Snow patch removal.
I can't wait to see this job description. It's like Manny, Candy Manny.
It's, it's, it's like so many.
Well, I just, it was a TV show.
It's like, and, and this, this is meant to be a respectful statement, so I hope it comes out like this. But it's like so many other positions we have, right? When you're small, you all kind of put on a bunch of different hats and you figure it out.
Athletic director stipend isn't necessarily the athletic director? Or are you saying that this would be Robert doing all of this?
If he applied for the .75 custodial position.
Right, but he's still athletic director. This is something else.
True. Yep.
Okay. Yeah. Well, the athletic director is this stipend.
That's right.
Because you have to get it all. Because he has a salary as well outside of the stipend, right? I thought, well, yeah, I asked that on the last.
This year, he's a, he's a partner teacher.
Okay.
So, yes.
I remember seeing it, his name twice somewhere.
Yep, he had the stipend and then the partner teacher salary. That was the discussion with the union that we had, because he wasn't in Unit A.
Okay.
Yep.
Anyone else? All right, now entertain a motion to approve the, what do you want to call it? Reorganization. Yes.
So moved.
All right.
I'll second.
Okay, Amanda and Tim. All right, any other further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 opposed?
And our last item on my report this evening is to review our ESR3 proposal. We are on ESR3. ESR is our COVID relief money. If you remember, we had our first round, that was in the summer, that we used for a lot of the PPE, the personal protective equipment, cleaning the HVAC. Then the second, in our partner teachers, at least the first half of the year. Then the second round went to the additional interventionist that we put in place in our budget for the next couple of years. And this is round three.
If I may, for those that may not know the acronym, because it was asked of me, ESR stands for Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Funds. So that's part of the American Recovery Plan, and those are funds that they've been distributing specifically to schools.
So if you hear ESR, is it ARPA? ARPA is the other one you hear. That's American.
What is it again?
There's ARPA.
Elementary and secondary.
It's the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund.
And then ARPA is the American Relief.
As opposed to ESR.
Correct.
ESR are different, yes.
See, we're going to get this confused, because we're from Massachusetts, and we're not going to say that ER. It's going to become a totally different thing.
Well, we're going to all teach everybody how to say R.
So what you have before you this evening is laid out by grade level. So our elementary, middle, and high school levels. And these were developed by the building principals in conversations with Matt, Jill, and I. And the first things that the principals did was they went right back to those intervention positions, if you remember, that we eliminated from the budget. And they put those back. You probably noticed, those are back first. So you'll see, and, and then frankly, some of them actually even expanded. So then we also looked at what the costs are for each, and then had a discussion about, is the cost reoccurring? So what you'll see under each of the grade span, so the elementary, the middle, and the high school, is the first-year cost, and then the total annual cost over the three years. That's important to note, because we have three years to spend our ESR money. And our ESR, we got our allocation this week. It's $1,269,000, in that range.
Repeat that, sorry.
It was a.
$1,269,000.
Approximately. So about 1.2.
That says ESR3?
Yeah. And we have three years to spend that money.
Three years from 20.
FY '22 it begins.
FY '22.
So '22, '23, and '24.
Thank you.
So what we did when we laid this out is showed you the first-year costs, because some of these are one-time expenses. But then we signified in the column all the way to the right if it's reoccurring, so you can see what the reoccurring costs are. So you'll see the total one-year cost in each grade span, and then you'll see the total three-year cost. I will tell you right off the bat, the total three-year costs for all of the proposals in front of you are just over 1.1 million. So there's still about, I think it's 80,000, 90,000 left in ESR3. We left a little bit of a buffer there.
Middle school has. Well, yeah.
A lot of surprise for social emotional needs.
And I, and, and I don't know how people want to start, so I'll just open up the discussion to this. But I, I, I am all for social emotional support and stickers and stations that get people to move and sensory. But I am just, I am, and I know it's not much, and so I know it sounds silly, but I am not for cozy cocoons and crash pads, and, because I think, who's going to clean them? Who's going to go in them? Who's going to, I just, I, I just, I don't know.
You're not alone. I had the same thought.
Yeah, they jump out at me as well.
I believe those were for the sensory classrooms.
Yeah, they are. But do we have stuff like that now, Jill? Oh, you got to either come close, or you got to scream. Your mask is hiding the world.
So I think this is, I mean, you're already looking at a different classroom. Do you have sensory rooms for our special ed programs?
Right.
So you're looking for.
Because we have other kiddos who need that type of space.
And, and I get that, but in the sensory rooms that you have now, do you have things like?
We do have things that are really individualized to kids. We have.
Cozy cocoonies.
We have body socks. There are kids who need body socks for sensory types of issues. We do have, you know, weighted blankets.
Are like beds they can lie on?
Say that again?
So, like, these beds that somebody's like.
We do have different things that kids need, you know, for sensory types of.
Not now, because they're clothed and you can't use them in COVID, but we once did.
We have, yeah.
I used to like that squeeze machine.
I mean, I bought them for my own classroom back in the day. Big, like, not beanbags, but similar to that cocoon thing. It's flexible seating. Yep.
Yeah. Jane, you have to remember that these are kids who could be dysregulated or have sensory problems. So it's not just like a lounge, you know what I mean, for kids to go in.
No, I, I guess, and trust me, I get what you're, what's trying to do, and I get the squeak, squeak balls, and the lights under the desk, and the, I'm, I'm just thinking from a pure, healthy, like, I just, I just go, ew.
Yeah.
You know, like, ew.
There are some new ones that have come out that are actually wiped down.
Wipable?
Yeah, we were really careful when we ordered this year for our sensory programs, that we had things like the weighted laps used to be fleece. And now they actually have weighted laps that are, you can wipe. We have sensory blocks, not blocks, pads that go on the ground for kids, and they're actually wipeable, you know what I mean? Able to clean, so. So I'd have to look at that specific one, but.
And it could just be a picture.
I want to bite that for myself.
This actually does say, create sensory room and second floor computer lap walls.
Correct.
This reads as a general.
That's what you were saying.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. We have special ed sensory.
None of this is for special ed. This is just general.
Right.
Middle school.
That's not to say that a student wouldn't, you know, in special ed may not use something, you know? But there are, we do have sensory rooms in buildings for, you know, very particular programs, for kids who need it, you know, on ongoing basis throughout the day. I think the middle school is looking to set something up, because we do have some kiddos that need something a little bit different sometimes to be able to regulate themselves.
I have seen kids in body socks.
Yes, we do.
Middle school, middle school students that are dysregulated.
Yeah, but that, that's like bears, though, right? It's not.
No, it's, no, it's part of the school, it was at the school that I was in.
It was. I would say for most of our kids who have body socks, right, there's no share, I mean, body, they're on you, face, head.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They haven't been shared. But a lot of these other things, some of the bigger things, I think Sarah was mentioning, we have purchased some sensory items, whether they're seats, whether they're lap pads, whether they're on-the-ground types of things. We're trying to be conscious of the sharing. So, you know, being fleece and being cloth sometimes isn't the best. Anyway, not just right now, but, you know, because the kids are, like, you know, laying along, not just sitting in a seat. They're kind of engaged with those types of things.
I think maybe because it's said for all students.
I'm surprised it's not coloring, coloring pens in here. Like, the adult coloring books in our social emotional room, everybody loves the gel pens and the coloring.
Jason, who did you say compile these? I'm sorry.
Yes, no, it's okay. So each of the principals worked with their school-based teams, then they conferred with Matt, Jill, and myself. But they started with, and again, you probably saw, like, the intervention positions we eliminated from ESR2, they started with those. So those are all, those all are back.
They also involve their school councils and, like, family support.
They did with their initial budgets, and some of these materials are from that. Not all, but some of them are from that.
Can, can we talk about what advisory at the high school is going to look like?
So this is probably, my, my sense is, is a take two, take three, take whatever of advisory. So the incoming principal, Ms. Fallis, would actually like to try the advisory program small and start with just freshmen. And over time, build out the model. So at each year, it goes up to the next grade, to the next grade, to the next grade. Now, from what I understand, and you all can correct me if I have this wrong, that was tried, I believe, before, and it just stopped and fizzled, and it never really worked. And then that morphed into something else, which morphed into.
Well, it became, first of all, it was a contractual issue.
Yep.
Because, esp, I mean, as you're explaining it, so freshman teachers are going to be required to do this, but then senior, you know, other teachers won't be, you know, so it became a contractual issue. From how we did it the last time, it was a huge safety issue in my eyes. Nobody took attendance. The kids were wherever. If they wanted to get support, they could. And then, and then we started to, then we started to kind of focus on time on learning, and then that became part of it.
But you're talking about the support period, not, because before that.
To me, those are the two similar things.
But before that, we had an advise, before that, like, we have to go way back. There was an advisory where, like, every student in the school was, had somebody as, like, a mentor, or whatever. Could be the custo, you know, could have been anybody. Like, every, everybody who worked there had people, and, you know, touch base with those people. So I, I, I think there's a lot of different.
That's why I was asking for a clarification, because.
Having discussed, having discussed is a two.
I just, for me, the, I mean, we, I, we do advisory. They need to be assigned to people, not if you need help, stop by Mrs. Smith.
No, it's not that.
And Mrs. Smith is never at her desk, and, and the kids are running amok.
That was a support.
Support period.
That was a support period.
That's what it became. But in my mind, it started as something similar to what we, at my high school, call as advisory, except if there were any issues, we did not know where kids were.
In conversation with, with Jill, Jill Fallis, and Jill PG, this advisory is significantly more structured. It, it has a curriculum, and there would be training for the teachers.
Which then leads me to the contract question, because is it another prep? You know, is it another prep? Is, is there, you know, all of that, I think, then bubbles to the surface, especially if only people working with ninth graders are going to be doing this. So just a.
No, and so.
If we could get some more clarification on that, would be great.
And we did reach out to the union to discuss the department head piece, in terms of what that reorganization might look like. And, you know, we certainly can have a conversation with them about this too, as we move forward.
It's great when it works.
So what is the 15,000 covering on advisory?
Training.
Predominantly, predominantly the PD.
So there is not a stipend? They're not being paid to have a mentor connection?
That wasn't written into this as it stands. That was, that was a number associated with professional development and resources.
And would we use an outside PD person?
I believe, I believe there, that's what would be explored. I believe, I believe there, that's what would be explored.
When does the advisory take place during the day? Because if it's just freshmen, what are our sophomores, juniors, seniors doing during that time?
They'd be in class. They would be in their regular class. So, so instead of that time block, teachers, instead of having their, you know, math course or whatever it is, that, that's the class that would be assigned to them.
So the teacher that's teaching math would not be mentoring?
They wouldn't run a math block during that. They would have an advisory block during that time.
On the third page?
Yes.
You have forty-five thousand dollars allocated for Chromebooks for kindergarten through second grade.
Would not a-
Can you confirm which third page?
Say one, yeah, say again.
Elementary.
Elementary, sorry.
Oh, elementary?
Page two of the elementary school.
Oh, okay. Thank you, sorry.
Uh, would not a touchscreen device like an iPad be more efficient in that? I, I don't know too many kindergarteners that can type.
They're on the Chromebooks now.
Yeah.
That's what we have them using. So the idea was to replace the ones that the seniors, I believe, are.
Yeah.
The initial plan was to roll the ones that the seniors have down, but Chromebooks have a very short lifespan, so as you know, with your work. So we were looking at replacing those, and the younger students are working on Chromebooks already, so we thought to be consistent, we would go with that.
All right, anyone else?
Oh, I had one.
One of the, one of the things that, that I, um, that I guess I'm, I'm hopeful for, I know we, we look at these as three-year, out of the S R grant, but I'm hoping some of them become things that go into the regular budget. So in other words, if it goes in, let's, I'm just picking one and not saying that that's one, but let's say the math interventionist, we get it into an actual budget once and keep it there. Could potentially free up a hundred thousand in, you know, the second two years if it's in the actual budget. So there is potential, these things could change over time. And I would like to see us, if we have, um, funds available or funds that, that we don't get to the one point two six nine or whatever it is. I would like to see the district look to, um, design an administrative position that has to do with facilities. That has to do with maybe looking at capital and, not that Matt's not doing a wonderful job, but I think, um, we brought him on board to do the administrative stuff of the business stuff, and I think we have some major capital things coming our way, and I think we will burn him out if he's knocking on doors saying, hello, can we cut your trees?
Yeah.
No, no offense taken.
No, Matt, I, you know, like, kudos up one side and down the, like, I, the job you're doing is unbelievable, but I want to keep you in the district doing that job. And so I just, I really think, and I don't know, you know, if S R funds can be used in that regard, but it is planning, you know, it is planning for buildings. It is planning for, you know, keeping people safe and, and all those other, like, I could make the argument. And I know that there are people on the committee who have had in the past issues with growing the administration over the, over the student, but I, I think we've got some major hurdles coming down the pipe in our buildings and in our facilities, and I think we need to, to really look at a dedicated person who can start working with the towns, start working with the, the community, and, and move those, that piece of the, you know, take something off somebody's plate, if you will. So I would like to propose we add something to that effect if it fits in the guideline of the, the dollars.
What we could do is free up money in, um, the budget that would be an eligible expense for S R three.
Future, yeah.
To do that.
You're thinking, I'm sorry, are you thinking that would be a full-time, forty-hour-a-week-
Yep.
-insurance and all of that position?
Yep. Assistant, whatever you want to call it, facility director, facility, I, I do, Tammy, I think we're there.
How many other districts-
This size?
Operate, uh, yeah, without a facilities manager of some sort.
In our area?
I mean, Uxbridge has one.
Uxbridge has one, Mendonupton has one.
Uxbridge has a lot of administrators that we don't have.
Mendonupton has one.
You are.
And I know that people may not want to hear this, but we are the only district in this area that does not have that, that does not have an assistant superintendent for teaching and learning or a director of curriculum.
Yep.
And, yeah.
Yep. I was going to ask something unrelated.
Which I know we reorganized that.
I mean, I, you know, we are, we are two years behind in our town request for a capital, you know, budget proposal. You know, and we're getting there.
Yeah.
We're doing the best we can, and we're going to move forward, but, you know, if we, if we had a person, or we had a, you know, dedicated time, effort, money, like, put our money where our mouth is. We need, we need it there. I, I just, I believe it.
Well, I'll honestly say that when we just approved the capital projects, my first thought was we went this year without committing any capital to our towns, and then, in, in the same respect, that two hundred and sixty-five thousand that we just made a motion for could have been used for other things in the buildings. You know, yes, we do have the money to be able to do those things, but had we done it the right way or in that order, I, I don't want to say right or wrong, but in the order of going through our towns for capital projects, it would leave that money for other school-based funding that we needed. Tammy, we've had two capital meetings already that are pretty in-depth on the issues within every building. And every, and, and the two meetings we've had, we've sat here talking about which building are we going to be able to renovate or, or make a new building, and which one can we live without? And we've already spent about five hours almost talking about the same thing, and I think we all already know where we need to be in that, in that group, but I agree with you, Jane. The, if the focus is coming from one person and that can just focus on that, it's so much.
Well, I just, you know, I mean, every project we talk about, we talk about applying for funds through this, you know, MSBA. Who's doing those applic-, like, who's doing that?
But I think we might move faster if we have that body in place.
No, I agree.
And, and, you know, because the, as great as the engineers are that have joined us both times, they're, they're telling us three years away from even applying for, and I'm sitting here going, we need it. We need it now, not in three years. I can't, and I, and I, in the two meetings, I'm like, we can't sit here for three years and talk about this. It needs to be in progress already. So I, I, I think that's a great idea, especially being that we have three years of this money, and we haven't even, I mean, this doesn't equal the, the one point two.
No, right.
Yeah, so it's about like eighty thousand less.
So putting another full-time administrator, yeah, well, yes, with insurance, yes, with, um, on that, on, on the team, working, you know, obviously in conjunction with what's already started and, and done, I, I think we would make so much progress in, in the shorter time.
I just keep thinking, in those capital planning meetings, we keep talking about like the low-hanging fruit. What should we have attacked first? If there was a facilities director, would we have so many of those, I mean, little projects in the big scope of things? But we wouldn't be worrying so much about those, because they would have gotten tackled as they came up. And then we could focus those meetings on the, like, here and now, what are the big goals we have?
Did we, speaking of which, did we need to put any of those in, or can you put any of those in here? Like, no.
The small, like the small capital projects? No, like, like the laminate for the doors and things? That's not an el-, no, it's not eligible, unfortunately.
Not, what about the door, what about what we didn't include in the mobile elementary? The vestibule doors that we-
Oh, the, the, no.
They, they, the expenses do have to be related directly to COVID prevention or addressing learning gap.
Unless it would stop the COVID from getting masked on.
The masking, it's masking.
They've actually, they, they did say that there are capital projects allowed through this funding, but in all of the trainings that I've been to-
Probably ventilation.
They've said, yeah.
Yes.
They've said, you better be very careful with what you're going to say is a capital project associated with COVID.
I guess, actually, what I meant was, should we have lumped some of those into our previous discussion about small capital projects? And I know I'm not supposed to do that, Jane, but, like, the, the, when we exit and there, you needed to have a graded exit, and we didn't have one, the ADA stuff. Like, did, should we have, oh, low-hanging fruit? Put the low-hanging fruit in the small capital discussion previously?
Yeah, probably.
Oh, with our-
We haven't finished that low-hanging fruit list, because we don't have a facilities director.
There you go, yes!
Right.
I just, I, I.
If I could add something too, just selfishly, there are projects I'm trying to work on with Matt, and I can't get him, because he's working with the cement guy. Filling in the cracks in front of the complex, or the other day, he was walking Fair Street, and like, where is our assistant superintendent?
Right.
And he's looking at, I mean, those things are important, I, I get it, but we have a twenty-eight million dollar budget that we're, that we're trying to manage, and-
Yeah, and I just, I-
It is hard. It is, when, you know, but.
And I, and again, you know, you owe man's job for, for all of the administrators we have. I think they're covering more than they should, and I think, who loses are the students in the district? Like, I, it does go back to that. It really does.
I, I guess my concern is, you know, two, three years ago, we're cutting teacher after teacher after teacher. And if we get to that point again, I will pick a teacher over a, any of these titled administrator things all day long. We, we need teachers in front of our kids, and we can't have class sizes of thirty-one, split between two grades on two floors, all of that. I, I just caution that we use, we use our money wisely so that we're never in that position where we have to do so much ridiculous things that are bad for kids, again, because of budget.
And I don't disagree with you, and that's why I said, as we build these things into our budget, you know, as we build in these reading specialists and we get them into the budget, then that frees up, you know, some other money along the way. I mean, I, you know, because eventually, we'd have to get this facilities person in the budget. We'd have to get these math interventionists in the budget. But I just, I think if, you know, with, I don't want to say there's an influx of funds, because there's not, there's dedicated funds, but if they allow us to manipulate enough and, and, you know, put the, put, take care of the need, where the need is, does it finally give us a window where we can do some other things that will serve the district really well? And that's, you know, I, I agree with you, Tammy. I mean, I don't want to see thirty-five kids in a classroom and, uh, some teacher who has to teach second and third at the same time. You know, that's why we did the regional agreement. Like, I feel like we've addressed those issues, now we have to look at the other issues that are really weighing us down. And one of the things that, that's weighing us down is the ability to move some of these projects forward, because we just don't have the personnel to get behind them. I mean, we just don't, like-
I mean, it's, it's going to be a massive undertaking.
Right.
Yes, it is.
It is.
From, just from the two meetings we've had, and we really need to do it.
It's going to make the regional agreement look like-
A piece of cayewa.
Yeah, thanks.
Or the block story.
And Sarah's the chair.
So now you know you really need a facilities director.
Well, and just, our families listening, I, I don't want anybody worried about class size. We're, next year, we're between like twenty and twenty-four.
No, no, no. We're just always talking about pots of money, and, and we only have so many of those, and so.
No, I just, yeah, I didn't want people worried about that.
For me, it's like, you save money here this year, then you don't have to worry about that in next year's budget, when, you know, you come out with a surplus, and then you can keep that math interventionist. But for me, it's, it's just a matter of how much money in, you know, and I, I get that we have this, but, um, you know, that's just my worry about being top-heavy.
And I, I, I know that-
In a district of less than two thousand.
I know that people know this, but school isn't just the teacher and the principal. It's not.
Sure.
If this district wants to grow, then we need a different model, because the one-room schoolhouse of the teacher and the principal, it's not cutting it. It's not. Teachers need coaching, kids need interventions, you need cutting-edge materials, resources, and then you have the whole operations side. And I know that the committee knows that, but I'm just saying, it's, it's not just higher principal and four teachers and you're off and running. That, that's how schools get in trouble, and that's how kids get poor instruction and poor resources and materials. And again, I know the committee understands that, but.
Anyone else have any thoughts or concerns with this?
I had a question.
Yeah.
The double asterix of the asterisk? I hate that word. Uh, page one, before school programming.
Oh, Jane was going to tell something different than you all are looking at.
For elementary.
Yeah, go ahead.
What is, what is that?
Where are those asterisks?
They're at the very top.
Top of the first page.
Yeah.
Right, but usually it's like a-
Yeah, it matches to it.
He, you know, it matches something else.
Yeah.
All of those things are before school programming on the first page?
No.
Before school.
There's nothing with it.
It was before school as in summertime, correct?
It was like, ooh, that sounds interesting, but, that's okay.
There are school districts that have child-
I had sent that email the other day about the S R. Are we meeting all of like the rules around it with these? I'm trying to, I don't have in front of me to remember exactly, but it was like polling the community members to make sure that-
I saw that. It was a survey.
Yeah, they want a survey from people before, like, approving that money, so I just want to make sure, either I read it right or maybe I read it wrong.
I thought it was a survey, but it wasn't like you have to do a survey in order to get it.
And I thought it was more for commu-, like, community, um, school districts, not regional school, like, in your town, check with your town, you know? Make sure your town administrator is doing the blah, 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 and make sure your communities are, so I, that's how I read it, more geared in that direction.
With the single, um, like the municipal school districts that are connected to the town hall, are they're getting their S R money plus the towns have a lot of S R money, so I know for instance, one community near us has all of their S R money, plus that their town gave them eight hundred thousand of theirs. So it is a huge-
And that's where they want the community to weigh in and buy.
I think so.
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure we weren't going to run into trouble two years into this, thinking that we have this plan.
No, but we have to apply for this now, like, we're-
It's open until October, I believe.
October, right?
Yeah, so we have until October to apply.
Yeah, but, but I mean, not like, it's not like we apply a year from now.
No, no.
No.
Within the next month.
You want to bet? Add that to the list. All right, anyone, any other?
I mean, are we going to like say what we don't want in this list, like, is that what, is that what we're on?
I'm looking for suggestions, because it's all, you know.
Well, how do we make your suggestion work, Jane?
Yeah, because, like, how are you recommending that we do that?
Oh, to get the, um, other position?
Yeah.
So I, I guess I'm, I guess I'm asking, um, the administration to look at, are there other things that are in this year's budget that we, that could become a part of this?
To free up the money.
Instead of free up the money in the budget.
And then they would bring us a job description, and we would approve.
Yep.
That would have to take stuff out of what is in front of us.
It wouldn't take stuff out of what is-
Can we do that?
It's still like a million dollars.
You can free up money, you can look at what is in our local budget that we could use this
Right.
to, to purchase, and then free up those dollars in our local budget. Like seventy thousand or whatever.
You say, yeah, seventy, eighty thousand dollars. But that's only one year, so then we need to make sure that we can maintain that.
Yeah.
Because obviously, a facilities manager isn't going to do a one-year job.
That's right.
Yeah, because you, you shouldn't be out dealing with boilers and electrical problems and solar panels.
No. I love it.
You're not good at it, Matt.
I love it.
We appreciate it.
So, so I guess let's stick to this one, and they can bring us another proposal for mine. We'll put that on June ten.
Yep.
But, uh, does anybody have any thoughts, issues, concerns with, other than cocoon?
I mean, are these COVID expenses? Flexible seating, sensory wall?
So it's, so it's COVID.
Social emotion.
Because these are coming back with social.
I'm ready to.
It's social emo- like, it's, it's the, you know, it's addressing the learning need, so it's the social emotional, you know, acclimating back. Tammy, go for it.
The summer questions, is this this summer or next summer?
So those are.
These summer reading books, this is like we're buying them now and sending them home in a couple of weeks?
Yes, but those are reoccurring, so we would actually have the money to do that for the next few summers. So if you look at the, if you look at your sheet, like, say, if you look at the jump start, look at the elementary?
Yep.
And see the jump start and summer reading, they're reoccurring costs. So we would do that.
So five thousand is fifteen thousand.
Yep. So if you look at your.
But if we're just applying for this money, are we able to spend it right now?
It can be back, yes, it can backfill expenses. Actually, the Esser III can run, so Esser ran just for this past year. Esser II runs the way we're spending it between FY twenty-two and FY twenty-three. Esser III can backfill anything in FY twenty-one and go through FY twenty-four.
So if we spend it right now, we can, we can re, refund ourselves later. Okay, okay, that's, I, because I was like, we're, if we're just applying, how are we cutting?
No, that's a great question.
You know, ordering books tomorrow.
No, it is, absolutely.
Yep, yep.
And we're, we're sure, like, we get into this. I mean, I guess a five thousand is expense we could cover, but.
There are places that haven't applied for nor spent Esser I or II.
I just can't even, those are people that are in the paper and on Facebook, just.
I'm fixing my hair, Jane. Thank you.
It's beautiful.
But thank you.
Anyone else? Can I ask? No? All I can see is eyes, so I'm looking at all her eyes.
See eyes have it.
The eyes have it.
Do we need to make a motion here?
We do, we do, unless somebody wants to.
I move that we accept the spending proposal or spending update as noted.
Okay, all right. Is there a second to that?
Second.
All right. Any other discussion? Still hung up on the cozy cushions I've got.
You should, you should put some in your classroom.
Thank you, Jill. All right. Anybody else? All right, all those in favor of the Esser III proposal as written, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Abstention? Okay.
That concludes my report.
All right, business office, Mr. Aaron Ward.
May I just ask a favor?
I'll pass.
Nice try, Matt. If there are changes to this, can we do like the red line kind of thing so we don't have to, you know, you know how that is? All of a sudden, new thing's common where you don't remember what's what.
You can put, um.
I know Jason's an red line expert.
Yeah, we'll just color code it and do, yep, we definitely can do that.
I feel some amendments in the future.
All right.
A back shading.
Now I'm worried because I wasn't joking. This all was the facilities in business report. I really was passing. I'm like, uh-oh.
We don't do the business, so, or, we don't do the business one as a second. The, you know, the budget, the, the color one that old people like myself can't see. We don't do that. All right. Um, any school committee members have, oh, I do have something. I would like to take a moment and congratulate those seniors who will be finishing and graduating and have their pictures on the hall. Well done. The best virtual class we've ever seen.
They have one day left.
There is it? One day?
One.
That's tomorrow.
You haven't posted that yet.
I'm not going to.
Tomorrow's it?
I lost track.
Friday, no, tomorrow's it? They don't have anything on Friday?
No, well, Friday was supposed to be day off, so their last day was scheduled for tomorrow. And they have prom quit tomorrow night, so.
Prom what?
Prom quit.
Prom quit. I named it prom quit. It's their banquet.
Oh, it's a prom quit.
Their prom quit.
Like the cafeteria.
So I, I guess they'll have to sleep in Friday morning.
Tori was beautiful. I love that dress.
Tomorrow, tomorrow she graduates.
Tomorrow is her?
That's why I've been so crazy this week. It's just been, whoa.
Congratulations, yeah.
And you, you got her there. You all got your kids there. Me, mine, if she lives that long, will, she'll be happy. All right, anyone else?
I just, could we, actually, I mean, Erin, maybe you can do it. Can you give an update? Are, are we going to graduation this year?
So I have that question for you all.
I didn't see an invite or anything.
So graduation is as graduation has been in the past. So the chairs will be there, the people will be invited, the you all are invited. So when we do it outside, there is a, there is a section on the grass, the unlevelled grass where somebody's gonna break an ankle.
With the leaning light post?
The leaning light post.
That's the leaning.
But, so the first, like, three rows are, are for the school committee and then Blackstone Board of Selectmen, the Millville Board of Selectmen. And usually there's like, oh, Board of Selectmen person maybe will find those. But usually we, um, are kind enough to kind of give up those seats to the parents who have, and family members who have graduates. And, um, this year we have a lot of them. So i- if you are coming, please let me know so we can make sure we have enough seats. But, um, the first two rows will be for the, um, the Nachhol and Larkin family.
Oh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Except for my seat on the front corner.
Missed my chance.
Tammy and I will be shaking hands.
Um, is that allowed?
Are you coming?
Is that allowed?
So if you want, if you are and you would like to come, you are welcome to come. We'll make sure there's a seat for you.
Next Friday.
And just let, just let me know so I can.
Yes, next Friday, June fourth.
Six, six.
Six P M.
Six P M.
And then the awards night is in person outside six-thirty, uh, the night before, on Thursday, the third.
And are we invited to that as well?
Yep. Absolutely. We're very excited.
And there'll be cake for my birthday? Oh, yes, I knew that would be.
Yep. It's on the calendar.
Yeah.
It is.
Okay.
And senior parade, approved, not approved? What's, what's, I'm sorry.
We're not gonna be invited back to the next meeting.
I literally have been so off the grid, I know nothing.
Erin, like, you wanna go there or not?
Yeah, there's a, there's a modified parade.
There is a senior parade, the day that they're doing their senior picnic gathering.
Senior send-off.
Senior send-off. And they're parading from the middle school down Federal Street around to the high school, right?
Up Federal Street.
Up Federal, to summer, to Lincoln, to the high school.
Yeah.
So basically middle school to high school.
Yes, but the back roads, not Main Street.
The back Main Street, okay. And that's what day?
Tuesday, June eighth.
The eighth.
June eighth.
It's here at five-thirty.
And they have the dinner there in the courtyard.
Did you say something about food trucks? I think I also had pizza.
Yeah, they're not doing the food truck. They're gonna do, they're gonna do, um, I think pizza or something, you know. But they were gonna do the food truck and they decided not to do that. Because it all had to be.
They have to get.
If you didn't get the, if, if, you, you have to apply for this.
Permit.
Permit, and then if you didn't apply for it, that's fine, but it all had to be pre-wrapped, so they would just come and give it to the kids. So we're like, what's the point of a food truck? They're just gonna.
Yeah.
Because you want kids to pick what they want.
Right.
So they're doing something different.
Okay. Sorry if that brought up any sadness, but I'm just trying to, I was trying to keep track and I just, there's so many posts and I saw conversations, but then I didn't have any dates and I, you know, I need dates sometimes.
I think what's unfortunate is that people use lots of terms for lots of different things. And, you know, I know that last year's class had a magnificent parade, like, they had a magnificent parade. And I think that there are some people in the community who are hoping that that would become a tradition. And, um, you know, we knew when that happened last year that there were special permissions from the state to make that happen. And the likelihood of that becoming a tradition was not a great likelihood. But I, I will say, if there are parents who want to see that be a tradition in the future, I think it's something you need to start working on now. Not, you know, a month before the end of the school year or, or whatever, because it, it's not just the town saying, okay, the police chief will lead you around the town. I mean, there are a lot of.
Hoops and tape. That's not really what happened, but it was, we were told that they asked, or we were told no, months ago.
Right.
For the full parade. But then it sounds from the chief that that was never asked. So, yes, in the future, these kids should be very specific, ask them to do what they want.
Yep, yep. And, you know, and I would, I would challenge the, you know, senior class officers to get involved with that if that's, you know, something they want with their parents and, and make it a community event. I mean, make it a community, ask for it to be a, you know, there is a cultural council in both communities that, that looks to fund cultural events, make it a community cultural event. Like, there are ways to do it. I just think people have to, to get behind it and do it. Um, I know there's also been, um, comments of why one, uh, school gets to have a prom, another schools don't get to have proms. And I just think be careful with that because some people are calling things prom, which are, um, playing games in parking lots. And some people are calling things prom, which are, you know, just, also just dinners only, no dancing. You know, these things have been very different and it, it's like what you call it, so I like prom quit, whatever, prom quit, whatever. But, um, you know, I, I don't know. I think, I think there's disappointment. But I think that people are, are, once again, through this process, doing the best we can and the kinder we can be to people who are trying to do things, that I think the better the world will be. Anybody else?
Speaking of traditions, I know I've heard from several people in the community. The tradition for this year and last year of lining the front entry of the high school with the banners of each of the seniors. The number of times I've been at like a track meet or picking up at the school and you see like a parent with their senior standing near the sign, that, I really hope we continue that, not just a COVID acknowledgement, but.
We have that down to like a ninety-minute install. Like, that's actually, it was, yeah. Jesse, myself, one of our substitute teachers, a pa- a parent, I think, you recruited Tara. And the sign company had a team of four. And we literally did it in night, it was very fast. Like, we have it down, you do the stakes and then you do the pictures and you staple them in, like, we have it down to a sign.
It's expensive.
It's about four thousand dollars.
But with your facilities, uh, representative?
Facilities directors, yes.
And, and your groundskeeper? You wouldn't have to.
I was on Fair Street when that was happening.
But I, but I will tell you, I selfishly told everybody, leave me alone, I'm stapling and staking. I actually want to do this for the kids.
I, I, I agree.
I agree.
I think it's a, you, I mean.
Because we, we, maybe we could add that to our school committee line item.
Yeah, it's about four thousand.
That, and, um, I don't know what we've done with the kindergarten T-shirts. I know it, it comes up, but I don't know where it ever goes. Um, I know those were always fun when the class got the large.
Yeah, I, I can't wait to see the, the first group come up.
I think Will is the second.
We didn't, we haven't done that in a couple of years.
So sixth graders have.
Will may be the last class and he's fourth grade.
No, I have one with my third grader on the T-shirt.
So sixth grade. So I think Will is the first.
No.
He's fifth grade?
Fourth.
Oh, he's fourth grade.
So I think fifth might have been the first then.
So they're just leaving elementary.
That would be a cute one to bring back to them.
The first year that it started, Mike Dudek did that himself.
It was like random at first and then he ended up doing the whole.
And then they, everyone wanted them.
Everyone wanted them and then it, yeah, so.
So we should get those fifth graders together for a picture with their, their shirts if, if they, that's, because they're leaving.
Maybe next year, because we can't get in big groups still yet. When they come here.
Wear them when they first save middle school.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Oh, thank the town, the voters of Blackstone for approving our budget.
Yeah, thank you to both towns. We will have a July first budget.
It's two years in a row, right?
Right.
Don't jinx it.
Oh, my God, I guess did. No. Yeah, but yeah, yes, my first year, we got our budget through. Then we had last year, yes, we did.
Yeah, first year?
That's right, that's right, because it was the COVID.
Into the district, there was no budget. The end of my first year, we got our budget.
Three years.
The end of our second year, we got our budget, and this year we got our budget.
Hey, woo-hoo!
Feels good.
It feels good. It felt, you know, it felt great to text the moderator of the, of one of the towns and say, do you perceive there'll be any issue? And the response was none whatsoever. I think it will fly right through.
The one at work.
Yeah.
You know, from, on everybody, everyone's.
All right. Anyone else?
Good stuff.
Motion to adjourn?
So who?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all very much.